Just to let my colleagues know that the Chair of the Arts Parks Committee is here, and we are waiting for Councilmember LaBanche and Councilmember Reyes. Is Councilmember Englander present? Oh, there he is. I think this item may take a little bit. Councilmember Englander does have to get to another committee, so I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting and take hearing for informational purposes, and I'm sure the other members will be joining us in just a minute. So with that, that, do we have, well, we can't do the consent items until we have a quorum, so that is item number four. So, let's take item number four.
Item number four, motion, Englander Perry, relative to phasing out and eliminating the sales of sodas and all vending machines at the Department of Recreation and Parks facilities.
Please. Do we have any cards on this item?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to, if you want to speak on this item, please see the clerk for a card like this.
Councilmember Alarcon?
Yes.
Deputy City Attorney Arlette Remzi. Just want to bring something to your attention. If you notice on the agenda, with respect to item four, it describes application of this motion to the Department of Recreation and Parks, there's no reference to the library in the description on the agenda which potentially violates the Brown Act. So with respect to taking an action on this item, assuming we have a quorum, as it relates to the library, we have a little bit of a problem in that we didn't comply with the notice requirements with respect to the library.
Oh, it was my understanding, the library doesn't have vending machines.
But again, under the Brown Act, you're required to give notice in case the public wants to come, decide if they want to come and speak on an item.
Yeah.
So as, as this item relates to libraries, the public wasn't given notice that it applies also to the library. So just letting you know, you can certainly take public comment. I do know that library staff is here and prepared to address this, this committee, but just so that you understand, if you want to take, once we have a quorum, if you want to take an official action on this motion, as it relates to the library, we have a little bit of a problem.
You're telling me not to do that?
As fast as I can.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm not expecting to take final action on this item. I would expect to ask for a report back from the CLA.
Excellent.
Okay, so, we can correct the notice problem in between, I guess. Okay, with that, Mr. Englander.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Thank you very much for hearing this item. Obesity is an epidemic, a public health crisis that impacts all of us. The obesity epidemic in children is pointing to sugary drinks as a primary source of added calories. These beverages are full of empty calories in the form of added sugars and provide little to no essential nutrients whatsoever. According to First 5 LA Public Policy Brief on this issue, the annual cost that's overweight in obesity to California families, employers, and healthcare industry and the government is estimated to be at $21 billion. Changing behaviors around sugary drinks requires more than public education about their harmful effects. Powerful forces including popular culture, local conditions, and heavy corporate advertising drive parents, caregivers, and children to continue these unhealthy habits. Strong policies can support parents and caregivers by providing environmental changes that assist the development of healthier eating habits in children and reduce the health cost to the public at large. Policy changes affecting nutrition and menu labeling, vending machine choices, as well as public meetings, school district, and childcare beverage standards have moved us into the right direction. More needs to be done at the policy level to stem this epidemic. The brief goes on to state that preschoolers who are at risk of being overweight further increase their risk of obesity when they habitually consume sugary drinks. For each additional sugary drink a child consumes per day, his or her risk of obesity increases by an astonishing 60 percent. Children who are already overweight are more likely to remain overweight if they drink sugary drinks every day. The connection between drinking sugary drinks and gaining excesses weight, excessive weight is amplified by the fact that liquid calories are not as satisfying as calories from solid food. Research has shown that when we intake calories from a sugary drink, we do not fully compensate for those calories by eating less at the next meal, as we would of those same calories had they come from solid food. Consequently, calories from these beverages tend to be extra calories that lead to higher total caloric intake and therefore weight gain. Here in the city of Los Angeles, one in four children is obese. In many of our communities, it's one in three. This standard in stark contrast to a generation ago, when less than one in 10 of our children were obese. If we're serious about doing something about this disturbing trend, we have to focus our efforts on one major contributing factor. Soda, sports drink, and other sugar-sweetened beverages are the largest and the single largest source of added sugar and calories in the American diet. Consumption has doubled over the last 30 years, and children now consume more calories from sugary drinks than they do from any other source. The average 20-ounce drink contains 65 grams of sugar. Now, as a demonstration to you, I'm going to show you what that means. That's 22 packets per drink, 22, so I'm going to open up 22 of these just so you can see the visual here. 22 packets of sugar in every single drink. In LA County, more than 43 percent of children ages 17 years or younger consume at least one soda.
You're good, Mr. Englander, that's really good.
Thank you. We'll, we'll leave that here for you as well. In LA County, more than 43 percent of children ages 17 years or younger consume at least one soda, sports drink, or other sugar-sweetened beverage every single day. This is what we're giving our children every single day. The health consequences of excessive sugar-sweetened beverage consumption are major. Empty calories and sugar-loaded drinks contribute to obesity, and obese children are more likely to have high cholesterol, high blood pressure, heart disease, and type 2 diabetes, some cancers. Obese children also suffer from sleep apnea, asthma, joint problems, fatty liver, gallstones, and acid reflux. Obese children are more likely to become obese adults, further increasing their risk for higher rates of type 2 diabetes, heart disease, and cancers later in life. Profound mental health and quality of life impacts are well-known in children with severe obesity. Obesity is everyone's problem, and this is an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to be a leader, to be part of the solution. Adopting a healthy beverage policy for vending machines in these facilities is an important first step. The Institute of Medicine has said, has said this, "It is unreasonable to expect that people will change their behavior easily when so many forces in the social, cultural, and physical environment conspire against such change." Today, we'll be hearing from Dr. Paul Simon, Director of the Division of Chronic Disease and Injury Prevention from the County of Los Angeles Public Health, to discuss the harms associated with overconsumption of sugar-loaded beverages and their public awareness campaign. I also want to thank those organizations who are here today, including the American Heart Association, the California Food Policy Advocates, California Center for Public Health Advocacy, Los Angeles Food Policy Council, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, American Diabetes Association, which I've been on the board of for 15 years, and First 4 LA and other key stakeholders for their support. I urge you to adopt a policy, and what I'm asking today is to actually ask the CLA's office, I believe, and what I've been instructed is that, and I believe there are 22 packets of sugar, which is the amount in every 20-ounce beverage that you buy out of our city vending machines at our park and recreational park facilities. So I'm asking that, I've, I've been told we do not need an ordinance on this, and it does not have to go to the city attorney, but rather a policy change, and that could be drafted from the Chief Legislative Analyst's office and directed to the department to implement. I have language for the policy that I would recommend, and it's that I recommend the committee and council adopt a policy for its recreational park facilities that requires the beverage vending machines to include only drinking water with no added sweeteners, fruit-based drinks, at least 50 percent fruit juice, and no added sweetener, a maximum of eight ounces, vegetable-based drinks, at least 50 percent vegetable juice and no added sweetener, that's a maximum of eight ounces, a nonfat or 1 percent milk or soy milk, rice milk, unflavored or flavored, a maximum of eight ounces, and sugar-sweetened or artificially-sweetened beverages that do not exceed 25 calories per eight ounces. Further, that the council instruct the Recreation and Parks Department to incorporate this policy into its specifications when it releases RFPs for the vending machine service at its facilities, and finally, that the council instruct the Recreation and Parks Department upon the adoption of this policy to immediately begin work with its existing contractors for its implementation. And I appreciate your time today here, Mr. President, on this. Thank you.
Thank you. With regard to the question of policy versus ordinance, is that your understanding?
It's not my understanding, but I can certainly look into it. We can, we can revisit this.
And I would ask then-
Okay, so the question, the question is whether or not an ordinance is necessary relative to whether or not we have these types of beverages in our vending machines?
I think, as I understood, you want, you're suggesting or recommending that the CLA prepare a report for a policy that would make recommendations to various departments to implement these new standards that you want to propose.
That's correct. It was my understanding unless it requires-
You want recommendations, or you want?
An actual policy, policy language, a policy change that the council would adopt as a policy.
But the policy would be to eliminate these drinks from, from these vending machines?
Healthier, healthier choices, and I'll submit, I'll submit this language as well for the committee record.
I think that because it's my intent to ask for the CLA to come back with a report on this anyway, that, that could be one of the answers they could, they could discern.
Well, I think, if I may, since I represent the Department of Recreation and Parks, we have some, some concerns with the, the direction that you're proposing to take as it relates to the authorities under the city charter. It might be best to also have our office and the Department of Recreation and Parks report back to you on what they're currently doing and, and, and their opinion of what you're proposing, because this is something we're going to have to go back to our board to make a decision on.
Well, I'm happy to leave that up to the discretion of the Chairman of the Committee.
I wish I had that kind of discretion. What she's basically saying is that the Rec and Parks Department is, is controlled by the commission, and so they set these kinds of policies.
Right, and so the policy can obviously go, be drafted and come back to this committee and be sent to the commission as well. And so I would, I would support that path.
Good afternoon, Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. Councilmember Englander, we appreciate the motion that you've presented here. What I recommend is that we have the Department of Recreation and Parks work with the CLA's office on, on a report, and try to see if we can work toward taking some policy back to our board recommendation, because we also just entered into an agreement with our current vendor about a year ago, and we already have some requirements in there which pertain to making healthier choices and having healthier choices in the vending machines. So we can work with the CLA's office and work towards what the council member is asking for.
Can you report on what Recreation and Parks does now?
Right now, we have about over 130 vending machines at about over 80 sites, recreational sites, and what's currently in the-
These are just related to drinks, or?
No, for snacks as well, it's for drinks. And what we currently have in the agreement is that at least 40 percent of the choices that are in the vending machines have to be a healthy choice, and we have some guidelines that we put in for the vendor that was in our RFP, which was based upon Senate Bill 19. And what we had in there was that 35 percent of the calories, no more than 35 percent of the calories are, are to come from fat, that excludes a sale of nuts and seeds, and also that the item does not derive more than 10 percent from saturated fat, and 35 percent of the total weight composed of sugar. And we also have in here that fruit-based drinks are composed no less than 50 percent of fruit juice and no added sweeteners. So we already have some things that we had already implemented, that's in our current agreement with our concessionaire, but we can also go back and see what the council member is also, additional things he's asking, and see if we can work with the CLA's office, and see if there's anything, then we can go back with, to our board about.
And 35 percent would be how many packets of sugar on the blue folder?
I have no idea, I'm sorry.
I'm sure there's many experts here in the room that can answer that.
Okay.
Be happy to do that. If one, if I could address one thing as well, is when you do the report and come back with these recommendations, we'd like to implement, obviously, stronger language than what we have. One of the biggest issues we've had as well is that when you go to these vending machines, the children are often unattended when they go to the vending machine, because they're at a recreation facility. Oftentimes, their parents drop them off there, or they take the bus, or they walk to the park, and so they're not supervised, and there isn't a, an adult there present. The other part of that is that most of the time, the majority of the time, the vending machine is out of every, of, out of water and, and healthy choices. Immediately, either the first or second day, they're filled, they're only filled oftentimes once a month, and the only thing left in there is sugar-based, sweetened, or soda, and that's all they have to choose from. And so, that's been our experience as well, and so we'd like the department to look into that in addition to these other recommendations.
Okay, well, it would, it would be my intent to ask the department to come back with, work with the CLA on a report to tell us exactly what their policy is, but also any, any inhibitions you may have relative to existing contracts that may prohibit our ability to, to move in that direction immediately, and the time constraints that we may have if we were to implement that policy and make, make a request of the department to do so. I do want to say for the record that the northeast San Fernando Valley has the highest rate of obesity in the state of California, and so it is not lost on me, the critical nature of it, and the commensurate problems with diabetes and, and related issues are very prominent in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I would not blame any one particular source for all of those problems. It's a multiplicity of, of causes and effects, and so, but nevertheless, to the extent that we can reduce one aspect of it, I think is a good thing. So, I don't have any problem with, with moving forward with, with this. I think we have to sort of crystallize the idea. It's got all those crystals in front of me. But, but I think, I think, I think the council would be friendly to moving forward in this direction. Okay, so with that, let me, let me take the public comment cards and-
Okay, submit this as well, for the record.
Also, could I just request that you give us at least 60 days to work with the CLA to come back with a report, so we can understand, fully understand what the, the request is from the council member.
60 days?
We're into our summer season, and so it's, it's our busiest time, so if you could allow-
That's when they drink more soda.
We'll see what we can do.
I, I, I was thinking more like 30, but you need 60?
We'll see what we can do with 30, but I'm-
How about 45? Will you take 45?
I'll take 45.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Gone. Okay, then with that, Rosa Soto, from the California Center on Public Health Advocacy.
Can we find out what's happening with the other council members? Okay. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Again, I'm with the California Center for Public Health Advocacy. Councilmember Alarcon, thank you for your comments as well about the San Gabriel Valley, the, the city, I'm sorry, San Fernando Valley. The city of San Fernando has already looked at this, at this healthy option, opportunity, and has made it their recommendation for their parks to go healthy and have no soda. So it's a wonderful thing that the city of, of LA also follows suit. The community of, of California has really led the way in terms of how, how childhood obesity can be addressed, and so this link between sugar-sweetened beverages and obesity is now, is now true, has now been proven, and so our hope is that many communities will consider these facts. In Los Angeles County, there are nine communities that have already adopted these nutrition standards. They are based on a national panel of nutrition experts, and this work began in 2002, an opportunity for LA Unified at the time to look at eliminating sugar-sweetened beverages. All of this is on the premise that public dollars should be used for public good. If we, if we, if we have communities in our facilities and are able to find healthy choices, when in our communities there might not be those healthy choices, then this is a, a good thing. And so what we found is that in some communities in, in Los Angeles, most communities in Los Angeles, there are four times more fast food restaurants and convenience stores than there are grocery stores. Again, an indicator of what our environments are like. So the healthier options we have in our public facilities, the better opportunity we have for people to choose healthier. Our partners have also included the city of Baldwin Park, who has been working on this issue for over five years, and they now are seeing a decline in BMI in children. Again, because of a multifaceted approach that again starts with something like eliminating sugar-sweetened beverages at access in public places. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to coming back in 45 days.
Thank you very much. The American Heart Association, Jaclyn Hernandez.
The American Heart Association commends Councilmember Englander's decision to eliminate the sale of sugar-sweetened beverages at LA City Parks and LA City Libraries. As more and more children become increasingly sedentary and bombarded by junk food media and marketing campaigns, it is also important to create policies that will eliminate the temptation and easy access to sugary-loaded drinks. By replacing unhealthy vending machines with water, low-fat milk, nonfat milk, and 100 percent fruit juices with no sugar added and very limited sizes or quantities. Obesity is one of the leading factors which may lead to heart disease and stroke. Heart disease is a leading cause of death among all Angelenos in U.S. residents. Stroke is a fourth leading cause of death nationally, while it remains the second cause of death among Angelenos. The American Heart Association recommends increasing the consumption of water, low-fat, fat-free, unflavored milk instead of sodas or sugar-sweetened beverages. 100 percent fruit juices are to be consumed in limited quantities ranging from six to eight ounces per serving. It is also important to note that in eliminating the access to unhealthy beverages, we must also increase opportunities for people, especially children, to consume fresh, free, clean drinking water, with an emphasis on fresh and free. Many times, people purchase beverages from machines because there's no alternative. Drinking fountains do not work or are nonexistent. Thank you, Councilmember Englander, for your leadership on educating our city on healthier beverage choices while additionally helping Angelenos lower their risk for heart disease and stroke. Thank you, Councilmember Alarcon.
Thank you. Paul Simon from the County Public Health Department.
Hey, Paul. Good afternoon, Councilmember, and thank you. I'm here on behalf of the County Department of Public Health, where I direct the Division of Chronic Disease and Injury Prevention, to speak in support of Councilmember's motion as he expressed it in his, in his comments. I'm also a pediatrician, and, and I'm familiar with what my colleagues face every day in the clinic, where we're seeing kids who are markedly more heavy than they were a generation ago. It's not just the statistics, but actually the experience of pediatricians. And as you pointed out, it's clearly a complex issue, a number of different factors contributing. The major increase occurred in the 80s and 90s, and there's been a leveling actually in the last decade, and we're beginning to see the, the, at least a, a slight indication that things are improving, but we have a long ways to go. We're still up at about 25 percent, one in four kids. We want to get back down to 5 percent where we were in the 1970s. We're doing lots of things, community education, trying to create opportunities for kids to be physically active, improve access to all kinds of healthy foods. We feel sugar is one important contributor to the epidemic, and it's not that these beverages are inherently bad. Occasionally, having a soda is fine. The reality is, though, kids are drinking them every day. In fact, if you look, even children under age five, one in four have a soda or other sugary beverage every day. And so, we are looking for opportunities in every way possible to reduce access to sugary beverages. The policy that's being considered here is not something new. 10 other cities in LA County, a number of other big cities around the nation have implemented the policy, and we're happy to work with you to define how it can best be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Tom LaBanche has, has joined us on the committee, and so we do have a quorum. I'd like to table the item and allow us to consider our consent items. Items five through 12 are on consent with your agreement. We shall move those on.
Give me 10 seconds. Consent.
You reviewed all those in 10 seconds?
Yes. It's faster if you go backwards.
Okay, with that, items, what did I say, five through nine?
Five through 12.
I was close. Five through 12 are on consent and approved. We are on item number four. Mr. LaBanche, the only cautionary word that the city attorney advised was that the section, the part of the item number four that concerns the libraries did not make it on the announced agenda, so we cannot talk about the libraries, basically.
Okay.
We're just talking about Regan Parks.
Got it. But do they have vending machines in libraries?
Well, I just want to ask that technical question. I have the same question, and it's really not on the agenda.
I know, but they don't have vending machines in libraries. They may have something in a brand.
We're not supposed to talk about it.
How could you not talk about a public facility?
No, because it's not on the agenda.
I know, okay.
It doesn't matter because-
I got it.
It wasn't my intent to move this forward directly. Okay, with that, let's move on with public comment. We're back to item number four. Matthew Sharp, California Food Policy Advocates.
By the way, Mr. LaBanche, despite what you may be thinking, that is sugar piled up on the, on the desk.
I wouldn't think anything else happened.
Yeah, of course. There's 22 packets of sugar that Mr. Englander wanted to, in fact, where is Mr. Englander?
He went out to have a Coca-Cola.
He needs to take his sugar. Okay, yes.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Matthew Sharp. I work with California Food Policy Advocates here in Los Angeles. I wanted to underscore a number of the comments and statements in support of Councilmember Englander's motion. They were made by previous speakers. I have provided detailed written comments to you in writing, and wanted to just highlight a couple notes from that in this particular brief moment we have together in time. We're a nonprofit organization that works on a variety of parts of the nutrition safety net, trying to make sure families have the right resources to afford and to access nutritious and healthful foods. The role that I have here is in a number of different ways. I've been part of Los Angeles Food Policy Council, I'm a parent of two small children, spend a lot of time at recreation facilities, parks, libraries, pools, have very clear sense for how terrific these resources are for families across the city, and how important this environment is for shaping what is normal, what is available, and what the habits are that children establish at a very, very early age. And I wanted to highlight for you that I had a chance to testify in front of this committee 11 years ago on this policy. You actually have a city policy regarding soda sales at recreation and parks facilities. It was discussed a little bit earlier in terms of the current board commissioners' vending contracts, and in the years since then, the world has really changed. The actual specific nutrient standards have been very significantly revised to a much higher level of attention. There was a task force for many years that looked at this, did a lot of good promotion, and it's really time to take a look at establishing a new set of standards that makes sense for this era, and to try and take some additional steps to support this kind of policy change, by promoting free drinking water, by looking at all the other sorts of junk foods and snacks that are being pushed really aggressively on parents of young children all around the playgrounds, again, outside the scope of the vending machines, but a number of steps you can take will ensure that parents are supported in trying to encourage their kids to develop healthy habits at an early age. So, a lot of history to share with you about the task force and other elements of this story, but I wanted to stop there and refer you to the letters we've submitted in writing.
Thank you very much. Okay, Donna?
Sprouts, as in vegetable.
Oh, sprout, okay. Doesn't look like sprout. Dr. Sprout Metz, from the American Diabetes Association.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Sprout Metz. I'm representing the American Diabetes Association and the University of Southern California. Next to me is Peter Brown, Executive Director of the American Diabetes Association. I'm an associate professor at the Department of Preventive Medicine at the Kek School of Medicine at USC. I'm an obesity researcher with particular expertise in obesity and diabetes risk in minority youth. Diabetes is the- Diabetes is the seventh leading cause of death in the United States. It's the leading cause of kidney failure, new cases of blindness among adults, and non-traumatic amputation of lower extremities. Diabetes is also a major course, cause of heart attack and stroke. Nearly 4 million Californians have diabetes. The disease costs California more than $24 billion annually. More than 11 million more Californians have prediabetes and will develop the disease without intervention. Making healthy nutrition choices, developing fitness habits, and reducing weight are key factors in lowering the risk for the development of diabetes. To add to what City Councilmember Englander offered earlier, in our research at USC, in my research, we have shown that it's sugar, not fat or any other nutrient, but the consumption of sugar that's related to poor metabolic health, fatty liver, insulin resistance, and impaired insulin secretion in both Hispanic and African-American children. The American Diabetes Association applauds Councilmember Englander for presenting a motion aimed at improving the health of people in Los Angeles, particularly children who are without supervision, make poor nutritional choices, including purchasing high-calorie sugar sweetened beverages from the vending machines. The ADA supports the concept of the motion. The ADA has asked the council member to amend the motion to phase out and eliminate sugar sweetened beverages. We think that removing sodas is a good thing, but we fear that as it's written, the motion would allow the opportunity for sodas to replace, to be replaced with equally unhealthy options like sports and energy drinks. So, we appreciate having the opportunity to present today and look forward to working with the council member and others on this important...
Did you say "energy drinks"?
Yep. Energy drinks have almost as much or sometimes more sugar in them than Coke.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Larry... Okay, it looks like A-T-A-P?
Hi, Larry Atnip. Thank you for...
What is it?
Hatnip.
Atnip, okay.
Like catnip, without the C.
Oh, okay.
I came here representing really the vending industry. That's my world that I live in every day. And I wanted to make a couple points because I think it's missed. This picture everybody's been talking about is much bigger than vending. But in my world, I employ 25 people and these people are connected with everything from the route drivers to the distribution people, all people that are employed in the city. And what happens when you just go after vending, because as far as I can tell, when I look in the dictionary and I see vending, I don't see the definition saying "obesity." So, we're not the ones creating the obesity issue, but we're getting caught in the crosshairs here. So, we really need the understanding of the council members and the folks that are involved in this. And I see that the Parks and Recs already understand part of this and they've made some adjustments and they've made some recommendations that they're implementing. We can live with those, but our business model doesn't work. It doesn't work if we don't have the products that consumers want to buy. And I'm not saying that there's, you know, these are legal products, people can go across the street. And I have three kids. They play, they play water pool and they do play, you know, on the pool deck lot. Anyways, the bottom line is if they don't have the convenience of vending at the rec location or pool location or something of that sort, where do they go? They go across the street to the lunch truck, they go 100 yards down to the liquor store. They lose, I lose control of my kids. I can tell them to go to the park, go swimming, go have a great day, maybe give them some money to buy water or whatever they want to get, but they make some personal choices there. And I think that's good that our kids are learning to make personal choices. And I think some of the things that the people have said today are helping them learn those personal choices. And that's powerful, but it, you know, to pick on vending is very difficult and it's very difficult for my livelihood because all those businesses that stream down from there are affected by that. And that's the real reality of the world. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Sandra Larson.
Sandra Larson, I'm the Senior Director and Counsel of Government Affairs for the National Automatic Merchandising Association and we are the trade association for the vending industry. Over the years, the vending industry has been very concerned about the obesity issue. As a matter of fact, on the national level, we have implemented two programs for our members, Balance for Life and Fit Pick. And the Fit Pick program has been adopted by a number of municipalities across the country to provide healthy choices through vending machines and educate people about what are healthier choices in the machines. This is done through stickers, signage, and that type of thing. We want to make sure that people are educated about the calories, but also to be educated about the fact that this is not just calories in, it's calories out, and there has to be an exercise component of it also. Many of our companies are small businesses, as Larry alluded to, and changes like this, when there's an absolute ban on a certain kind of product, has an adverse effect on those companies and results in losses of jobs and loss of business in the community. We want to visit with you and have the opportunity to promote, to come up with a solution for this issue. We do want to see healthier choices offered and the vendor that has the contract, the Parks and Recreations, has worked with this over the years. Our biggest concern also is to signal out vending is not fair when there are so many other opportunities for people to buy these same products practically across the street or right next to the vending machines. So, target vending is not necessarily going to solve this problem. We need to come up with a solution that will provide people with education, give them an opportunity to make choices, and to have a wide variety of product available to them on city locations. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project going forward with the Department of Parks and Recreations. Thank you.
Thank you. David Tharp.
Good afternoon. David Thorpe of the American Beverage Association, the National Trade Association for the non-alcoholic beverage industry. A soda ban will do nothing to educate consumers or impact obesity. However, the beverage industry initiatives over the years have educated consumers and we have been proposing a new vending program here in Los Angeles to roll out. Our industry delivers choices. We have responded to consumer demand for fewer calories and more choices by providing more lower-calorie, smaller-portioned products. The results are calories per serving from beverages have declined by 23% since 1998. Sales of soda have declined by nearly 13% since 1999 and current soda calories are equal to the level consumed in the late 1970s. Also, calories from added sugars are down from soda are down 39% since 2000. So, this data shows that soda and other sugar sweetened beverages are not driving obesity. We also deliver fewer calories in schools. In schools nationwide, we remove full-calorie soft drinks. We developed these guidelines with the William J. Clinton Foundation and the American Heart Association. The results are 88% fewer beverage calories are shipped to schools nationwide. And we also deliver nutrition information. In support of First Lady Michelle Obama's Let's Move initiative, the beverage industry has placed new labels on the front of every bottle, can, and packs of calorie information is at the consumer's fingertips prior to the point of purchase. And we're working to do more. We have offered to roll out a first-in-the-nation vending program here in Los Angeles designed to reduce available calories and provide consumers with calorie information before they make their beverage choices. And we would also highlight the low-calorie options that would be available in the vending machines. The resolution ignores the bigger problem and fails to offer real solutions. We're here to offer a real solution to educate the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Cassell.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Richard Castle with First Class Vending and I provide the vending services for the LA City Parks. And let me start by saying that First Class Vending and our industry as a whole is committed to reaching out and offering healthier alternatives. You know, we have a, we developed one of the first well-within-reach programs. We work in conjunctions with healthcare facilities and other things like that. We're aware of that. We work with the parks right currently where 40% of the products that we offer are healthier items. And our feeling is that it's more than what we offer, but we have to work in such a way to educate the community as far as healthier eating. To single out vending machines is the culprit is wrong because what we've found by operating the schools, when they restrict the items at the schools, the kids go to the convenience stores across the street and load up or the catering trucks or the ice cream truck. We don't see a drop, other than a drop of revenue for the city. The city takes a substantial hit. We're all for healthier lifestyles and we're doing what we can, but we also believe that we need to allow the consumers freedom of choice. And so, we're working on that as far as signage on our vending machines, on calorie counts on the vending machines, all these things to enable people to make the correct decisions. Vending is a very small business dominated. In the LA area alone, there are 400, over 400 vending machine operators. They're all small businesses that make their livelihood off vending. If the City of Los Angeles wants to promote growth, you know, they're pulling the rug out from underneath these companies and they're not going to be able to operate like that. We're more than happy to work in any way we can with any of the committees or anything to achieve the goals that they would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Relis.
Good afternoon. I look different today. I want to talk really more specifically about soda. And this is a product that is useless and we really need to think about with our vending machines for healthier options. We're not talking about getting rid of these vending machines altogether. But soda in itself, as you've heard statistics about how it contributes to weight gain, but along with weight gain is also diabetes. Drinking soda not only contributes to making people overweight, but it also stresses the body's ability to process sugar. Rapidly absorb carbohydrates like high fructose corn syrup put more strain on insulin-producing cells than other foods. When sugar enters the bloodstream quickly, the pancreas has to secrete large amounts of insulin for the body to process it. A soda habit places such demand on the pancreas that ultimately it is unable to keep up with the body's need for insulin. And insulin itself starts to become less effective in processing sugar and these conditions both contribute to developing diabetes. Sugar affects other, soda affects other body systems too. It's been associated with kidney disease, increased blood pressure, heartburn, liver damage, and impaired digestive systems due to the corrosive effects of soda, as soda is one of the most acidic beverages you can drink. There's also osteoporosis that's high for our children because they're now not drinking calcium-rich products such as milk. Dental carries and erosion. We have such high rates of tooth decay, especially in our low-income children, and it's really contributed to soda that increases tripling tooth decay by up to three times. And also dehydration. So, if you want to quench your thirst, you don't do it with a caffeinated soda. It will actually make you become thirstier. Caffeine and sugar causes dehydration. It's a diuretic, caffeine is, it increases urine volume, and high concentrations of sugar draws water off as your kidneys are trying to expel the sugar out of your body. So, drinking a soda actually shocks your system and this is something that we're hoping that you can adopt healthier beverage options. And I really encourage to consider other policy changes as well.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Miranda. Please correct me if I... Miranda, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Medrano and I am here to represent and speak on behalf of the parents of students in LA Unified. I'm speaking about nearly 700,000 students. As it's been mentioned before and in the proposed motion, everyone knows LAUSD banned sodas in 2002, pretty soon after many, many districts throughout the country actually followed those, that motion and instituted their own bans and set limits for beverage, to have access to healthier beverages. In 2005, former Governor Schwarzenegger also did that at the state level. So, I think at this point, we are in a great, we have a great opportunity as a city to follow these kinds of regulations. I've spent the last six years of my work as an organizer and coordinator of the Healthy School Food Coalition, which is a group of parents, students, and teachers that work to promote and enforce healthy, a healthy eating environment in the schools. And I've spent the last six years at least talking with parents, engaging students, and learning about, and training and together enforcing these policies. And one of those for sure is the soda, the soda ban. I think we are at a great opportunity right now to, as a city, the city has a moral responsibility with the population here in LA. The County Department of Health put out a brochure that we talked about with the 22 packets of sodas for the Coke. I read it and I share it with parents. It's in English and Spanish. And it says that LA County alone spends $6 billion just in medical care for those people who drink sodas. And I work with a lot of young people. I work with parents. There's a lot of marketing everywhere, so I really can, allows you to consider this, these populations, right? We work in LAUSD, but we want, once we step out of the schools, we want to ensure that the same messages are in all areas such as parks and other areas, even the public transportation.
Thank you. Brianna Morrison.
Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Morrison and I'm a health policy analyst with Community Health Councils, where South Los Angeles-based community organization working to improve health access for underserved populations. Community Health Councils primarily focuses in South Los Angeles, which is one of many predominantly Latino and African-American communities that suffer from disparities in health access, health behaviors, and health outcomes. According to the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, South Los Angeles has the highest rates of soft drink consumption by both children at 55% per day and adults at 56% and the highest rates of adult and childhood obesity at 35% and 29% respectively. Like other predominantly Latino and African-American communities, this disparity is influenced by the easy accessibility of sugar sweetened beverages due to the high concentration of liquor stores, lack of grocery stores, and the low cost of sugar sweetened beverages as compared to healthier alternatives. South Los Angeles has an opportunity to be able to increase healthy beverage access by reducing the proliferation of unhealthy beverages like soft drinks and other sugar sweetened beverages throughout the community through this policy that could restrict these beverages in city-owned properties. Eliminating soft drinks and other sugar sweetened beverages from vending machines in parks and libraries can aid the city in more effectively serving the best interest of some of its most vulnerable populations like those in the community of South Los Angeles. And moreover, it's, this initiative can serve as a precedent for future policies that enable the City of Los Angeles to truly lead by example in the area of community health. We know that there's no silver bullet to improving the health of Los Angeles residents, but reducing sugar sweetened beverage access in city parks and libraries can be a part of a broader strategy to promote healthy eating and reducing disparities in obesity and nutrition-related chronic diseases. It's imperative that this healthy vending policy is integrated with a number of other strategies. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment cards?
I believe that's all.
Okay, then the public hearing on this matter is closed. Mr. Labonce, it would be my intent to ask the CLA to work with the City Attorney, Department of Recreation and Parks, to do a number of things. First of all, to work with Councilmember Englander to hone in on the specific policy objectives that Mr. Englander was targeting. And secondly, a couple of technical questions. Number one, the difference between doing this by ordinance and doing it by policy without an ordinance? The city attorney could explain that to us. And thirdly, if there could be a comparison of other department policies, particularly those that children may use more often. And I would also like to see a comparison with other jurisdictions in the county as to what policies they are implementing. It's my understanding, based on testimony, that the Department of Recreation and Parks already has a policy that's targeted on health considerations and this may merely be an extension of that. But I think Mr. Englander is trying to get us to a new level and I think, I think that's commendable. I'm also thinking of my daughter Camila right now, who's four years old and drinks far too much soda and I publicly admonish myself for that situation. But nevertheless, I think, I think it's important that we send a message about, it's not as if we can control every dynamic out there, but when we do have something in our control, I think it's our responsibility to do it in the way that is best. Even as parents, we don't have control of our children 100% of the time, but when they're in our household, we want to do what we can to... in our household, we want to do what we can to give them a healthy experience. Similarly, we don't necessarily tell them what to drink when we drop them off at Universal Studios or Disneyland, but when they're at home, we hope to at least make amends. But, and nobody's to say that, nobody's here testifying that these products are, are in and of themselves the cause for all these problems that have been described, but they're contributive, and I think it's clear that that is the case. So, so with that, it's, my intent down the road, not yet, but down the road to support a policy shift that would take us to the next level. But my direction today is to have the CLA report back after consulting with the city attorney and the Department of Recreation and Parks and other departments as they deem necessary, and to work with Councilmember Englander to hone in on exactly what they're proposing.
Some of the public comment, I think, was important when they spoke about at a park, if we go out to a park right now at 2:30, there will be an ice cream truck, or a catering truck, or some push cart, ice chest, you know, in the area, someone trying to provide service. How far is the arm that we have to make? I would like to ask if the Health Department could help us here to invite the beverage companies in here to what their long-term plan is, because they have not been, is anyone here from the beverage companies at all? You're from the beverage, which beverage company?
Testify.
Were you able to testify?
At this moment.
Okay. At some point, I think, yes, sir?
Also from the beverage company, we've been in dialogue with councilmen for three months.
Oh, I got that.
We put some substantive issues on the table, so please don't overlook the fact that we are trying to be part of that.
Oh, I absolutely, that's why I asked the Health Department to have a discussion. The most successful public health initiative that the United States has ever had is something we've all lived through right now. Can anybody name it what it is? Smoking. You know, 40 years ago, 55% of the people smoked. In California, now 13% or less, except I think I see all 13%, you know, when I see, I go past those bars in Hollywood. But anyway, because as we push them outside. That being said, there's initiatives that we could do, and I know as a young, and you were an athlete, Coca-Cola gave every park and every school a scoreboard. You know, there's other things that they've done all along. They used to print all the programs. I understand that. I just want to make sure the industry has an opportunity to say what their long-term plan is, because there's absolutely a correlation to what we put in our bodies, to what stays in our bodies, and what changes our bodies. So I want the Health Department, if they could, just to have a discussion somewhat with the industry as what they're planning to do, because I think they're, they see the writing on the wall that says that this is a correlation between good health and challenged health. Health Department, you want to just answer?
I appreciate that, and we're very happy to work with the beverage industry, because we hear lots of mixed messages.
All we have to do is put our hand out, and then, and that's, I think, what Mr. Alacon's trying to do in the next few months. We're going to get a lot of information, get this, at least this opportunity out. If the CLA could contact the Coca-Cola Bottling Company of Southern California, it's located at 14th and Central, with their beautiful old ship that they have there, and Pepsi-Cola and whoever the trade organization is, and get their input as we go forward. And then also, Mr. Alacon, I think we should look at the issue of whether if we do something inside a playground, how much do we ban on the street corner? Because people will come on the street corner to sell it, and then what problem it has if someone crosses the street? There's, you know, and all these things, too, just to look at the whole planning issue if this issue were to be, as it is looked at there. But I also think, too, the Health Department does a good job in a bathroom that says, "Wash your hands for good health." You know, there may be some little stickers that really, think about what we could do with the public education campaign, and moderation is the greatest thing. Yes?
We're doing a lot of public education around sugary beverages and lots of other things.
Right.
It is having an impact. We're seeing a very definite leveling of the obesity epidemic.
Right.
But it's headed down to where it was before. We also have to create a community environment that offers a healthier mix.
Right.
Ban a healthier mix.
Now, just as, this, and then lastly, yes?
If you're going to solicit comments from the audience, it might be better to have them come speak.
Okay, I won't do that anymore. Okay. I appreciate it. Lastly, right above our wonderful city attorney, who is a very special person, is the largest public area where millions of people come through our airport, you know? Would we go so far as to ban this in public airports? You know, I don't know, because a lot of people have stress, a lot of people get a drink, you know, and, and then they choose what they, I don't know, but that's a very big public, we did ban smoking, you know, so that's a bigger question if you really want to do that, and what effect it would have on all those things. So I think it's something we have to look at. I made my comments.
Well, okay, the matter before us is a little more specific than that, but the, if I can just state my perspective on it, the corporate America is by law required to seek out profitability to the maximum extent possible. If they do anything other than that, they could be sued by a variety of interests, especially other board members. So they're going to be driven by profit motive. I mean, that's the bottom line, and let's not kid ourselves. The question is, is not so much changing corporate culture as much as it is changing consumer culture, to be more aware of what they are consuming. So the industries will respond to that shift in culture, in thinking, and if people will buy healthier drinks, the corporate culture will, will transition to provide more healthy drinks in terms of availability. So essentially, what we're talking about is transitioning our society, and, and the extent to which government can transition us by virtue of policy changes and educating the public, we can, we can expedite it or slow it down, depending on what we do. I think it's desire of the city of Los Angeles, historically, to try and move us forward in terms of healthy choices. We don't always do the best job of it, and we have a variety of opinions on the council as to how to get there and where we should target our efforts. But the matter before us is very specific. Mr. Englander is asking us to move us forward on, on the notion of providing healthier alternatives at our parks and in the vending machines that are provided. He recognizes, and he testified, that it's not the be-all and end-all, or words to that effect, but it nevertheless moves us forward. As the chair of this particular committee, I'm happy to entertain other motions that people might have, I don't know about the airports, but, because I think Mr. Englander's primary consideration here is our kids, and that's why he focused on the parks.
What about, what about, just ask Richard, what about adjacent to the park, like a food truck?
Well, theoretically, there are some planning things we could do, but we would have to, you know, you could talk to Michael Legrand, and for those in the public, that's the, our planning director, to get an understanding to what extent we can place conditions, and I think we would have to define the nexus between the condition and why it improves our community. So it, it, I would guess it would take a very elaborate process. In this particular case, we have a very specific idea.
I got it, I got it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying it's going to create other questions that they may run right to the corner.
I think, I think the industry is very knowledgeable that they need to transition their industry. In fact, I, I believe, because I have met with the distributors in my district, I believe that they would love it if, if the culture shifted rapidly so that they could just produce healthy products, and they would, they'd be happy to do that.
But someone mentioned energy drinks. Energy drinks is loaded with sugar? I don't know of any. That old guy who tells those young guys to quit drinking coffee?
I object. You're out of order. No.
All right, but I mean, I'm just.
A personal issue.
I know. I just think if we're having this whole situation, I think it should be important.
But in any case, I want to, I want to, not straight from the.
I just wanted to remind you, earlier, you had, through a discussion with Rec and Park staff.
Forty-five days.
Twenty-five day report back.
Right. So we would ask for that report to come back that I described earlier, within 45 days, and it would be my intent to move this forward as, as quickly as possible, but we want to do so in, in the best way possible, and Mr. Englander was very receptive to sitting down with the CLA, because he, even as of today, received new information on the subject and may want to modify his original proposal. So with that, I want to thank everybody for testifying. We're not trying to put people out of jobs. We're not trying to, you know, take away, you know, profit opportunities, but we do want a healthy society, and I think incrementally, we're going to get there in this category, hopefully sooner than later, but in any case, this is just a very small step in the, in the global picture. So with that, item number, are you in concurrence?
Yeah.
Okay. Tom's okay, so that will be the order. Item number, we were going to take item number three out of order, I believe?
Item number three, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. John F. Zabo as the permanent city librarian.
I did have the opportunity to, to meet with Mr. Zabo prior to this meeting, and I did figure out that he has no relation to Gabor Zabo, that you may remember. Tom, and Tom and I are about the same age, almost exactly, and we remember people like that. But, so tell us, Mr. Zabo, after hearing this discussion about soda, what, what do you, you still want to take this job?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
We don't have any vending machines in the libraries, as I understand it.
Well, if we did, we want to make a lot of money on them, but by selling healthy products. So with that, Mr. Zabo, the mayor has appointed you, and we understand you come by way of Atlanta, Georgia, and a few other stints elsewhere in the city. And Mr. Labange, notwithstanding his, his relatively youthful appearance, he, he's a very well-experienced.
Seasoned.
And seasoned talent that we are pleased to have. But Ms. Adams would like to introduce him to us, and so I will accede to her comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Councilman Labange, members of the audience. I'm Eileen Adams. I'm the deputy mayor for the Office of Strategic Partnerships, and it's our office that oversees the Los Angeles Public Library System for the mayor. I want to say that we conducted a very extensive outreach effort across the country, encouraging the best and the brightest to apply for this position. We had a lot of help. Martine Gomez, our previous librarian, and our interim librarian, Susan Kent, were very helpful in that outreach effort. We had 40 applicants. A diverse panel of community leaders interviewed the six top applicants and recommended three to the mayor. The unanimous choice of both the selection panel and the mayor is John Zabo, seated to my left, who's recognized as a national and global leader in libraries with more than 20 years of experience leading four library systems across the country. John spent the last seven years, I think, as both of you know, as a director of the Atlanta Fulton Public Library System. He led the transformation of that system that had enormous governance issues, poor public relations, toxic staff morale, and minimal public confidence. When he arrived, there was a $15 million lawsuit against the system for racial discrimination, which the system lost, but he was able to turn that system around and make it one of the best in the country. He developed an extensive facility master plan with community input as its cornerstone. A $275 million bond referendum to fund the plan passed with 65% of the vote. He embraces libraries, as all of us do, as dynamic centers of the community with the ability to play an important role in critical issues. At Atlanta Fulton, he developed initiatives around health disparities, which we were just discussing, and I think the libraries, by the way, can play a very important role in nutritional messaging, workforce development, and emergent literacy, among others. As he discussed with you, Mr. Chair, he spearheaded the library's role in providing e-resources, and that can be maybe a topic of discussion for questions. He developed and promoted programs that celebrate the diversity of the communities and neighborhoods served by the library. This included a major expansion and renovation of the Auburn Avenue Research Library on African-American culture and history, an annual Caribbean Film Festival, which has become the venue where Caribbean cultural organizations connect and collaborate, creation of an LGBT archives, and Spanish-language children's storytimes, and other programs. He fostered the creation of new Friends of the Library groups and expanded the volunteer program there to 2,400 volunteers and reestablished relationships with many of Atlanta's private foundations. Finally, he's a national leader in libraries. He serves on the Executive Board of the Urban Libraries Council, the External Advisory Board of the University of Michigan School of Information, along with a member of UCLA's faculty, the OCLC Global Council, and others, and he previously served as the president of the Florida Library Association and as counselor of the American Library Association. So I'm very pleased to present him to you for your consideration. Thank you.
Wow. Busy man.
Indeed.
Mr. Zabo, please.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Alarcon and Councilmember Labange. I am deeply honored and incredibly excited to be coming to Los Angeles and to be considered for this, this position. It is a special time, I think, in the life of the Los Angeles Public Library, following the passage of Measure L. Our libraries here in Los Angeles and across the country are being used more than ever. Tough economic times equate to heavy public library use, and that is certainly, certainly true here. And this library in this community, as you know better than I, has tremendous public support.
Sorry, Mr. Zabo. Don't you hate when people forget to turn their phones off? Go ahead.
But these libraries have a tremendous support, and I think there's an incredible opportunity here for libraries to impact people's lives. Libraries, I believe, are about empowerment and opportunity. The people in Los Angeles that I've spoken with thus far, including both of you, have a vision of public libraries beyond just being warehouses of print material, and that's the case in some cases in other communities. People here seem to understand the role of the library and its, its ability to impact people's lives, and the library's ability to address very critical community issues like, as Eileen mentioned, health disparities, workforce development, helping people find jobs, people, places to be centers of lifelong learning. And I want to let you know that I love what I do. I am a librarian. I am very passionate about this work and love doing what I do every day and love being the library person 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And I trust that you'll see that in me as city librarian here in Los Angeles, and I thank you for your consideration.
Great, well, thank you very much. What are you reading right now?
I am reading a biography of a woman named Olympia Maidalkini, who was a, the first, the female pope, and was a, not really the female pope, but a very powerful woman.
I missed that one.
Very powerful, very powerful woman in 16th century Italy, and it's a fascinating biography.
Wow, okay. Mr. Labange, I think you're reading that same book.
No, I, I, I'm just reading my mail. Listen, Mr. Chair, we do have a great selection here. I had a chance to visit, and also, last night at a community event at Inner City Arts, John was there already immersing himself with the community on the challenges and the issues related to bullying and how we have to deal with that issue very effectively, and so sad was that one scene in the beginning of the movie. That being said, I think you hit all the bases about the workforce, about education, about pleasure, about not being just a, a public storage of public books. It's a place that lives and breathes. Seeing this discussion about health and the issues related to it, how you inform the public. So we had a chance to talk. We talked a lot about the Friends groups, because Friends groups usually have people who are really focused and caring and so passionate about the libraries. They're not neighborhood council people who are sometimes all over trying to see their issues. Passionate people in the Friends groups with a strong constituency. So Mayor Virogoza selected someone very special, and it's good to see Susan Goldberg Kent here, who's our intern, general manager of our library department, the librarian. And I also liked the way she said, how you love the job. And I also liked the way she said, "You love the job, and you love being a library guy", you know, so I think that's all you got to hear from, I got to hear from somebody, and so I would recommend approval, and I know I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Yes, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Zabo, and as I said, and I think he has all the key elements that fit into Los Angeles, the understanding of diversity, the understanding of the libraries being a center of activity as opposed to a place where you quietly read a book, and most importantly, that he views it, I like that word, as a place of empowerment, where you can literally transition people from one level of opportunity into a whole new level of opportunity by bringing them the world in the form of expanding their reading horizons. So I think he's a great fit for Los Angeles, and especially with some of the accomplishments that you bring before you. I do want to mention that Susan Goldberg Kent was the one that worked with me on developing that first sustainable structure in the city of Los Angeles, and so I'm glad to see her here, although I didn't recognize her. I apologize, Susan.
[laughing].
No, I can't see that far anymore. But with that, Tom and I are happy to approve your appointment and send on to the full council recommendation to support, and so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is that going tomorrow? No?
No, no, no. We, no request was made. We can put it in next week.
Okay.
We'll work on the timing with you.
Okay, whatever works. I'm just --
Okay, we'll work on the time.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. You made a good choice, I think.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move to item number one.
Item number one, communication from the mayor and Ethics Commission report relative to the appointment of Mr. Rudolph Espinoza to the Human Relations Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2012, and subsequent term ending June 30th, 2016. This matter is scheduled for council on Friday, June 22nd.
Okay, Mr. Espinoza is traveling and was unable to attend the committee meetings. I have no problems with his appointment. I did meet with him. I don't know if, Mr. Labange, you had the opportunity to meet with him?
I didn't get a chance to meet with him, but I think when it comes to council, the biggest thing I want is I want a bike rental facility somewhere on the outskirts. I want to expedite.
We talked about the Human Relations Commission?
And whatever else there is.
Then with that, it would be our recommendation to support the appointment, and that will be put on the council agenda for Friday. Okay, item number two?
Item number two, communication from the mayor and Ethics Commission report relative to the appointment of Mr. Jesse Maraz to the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority for the term ending June 30th, 2012, and subsequent term ending June 30th, 2016. This matter is scheduled for council June 20th, 2012.
Now you can talk about bike racks and bike paths.
Right.
You're so excited, you jumped ahead.
Please.
Diana Martinez-Lilly, Assistant General Manager, and we are here today to introduce Jesse, and I'm sorry, Maraz?
Maraz.
Got it right. A new candidate for the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Commission Authority.
Thank you.
I believe, were you a commissioner at one point?
Never.
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
No. But, Mr. Matas, we did have the chance to meet, but why don't you please present yourself to the committee?
Jesse Matas, electroengineer by profession, been in the energy business for most of my career. I had a small amount of time with LED WP. I now own a small business where we do energy efficiency, energy generation. Happy to be appointed by the mayor. Hopefully, everything goes well today and tomorrow. I was born in Mexico, so this kind of gives me a chance to actually represent my Mexican heritage as part of the commission, but more importantly, for history in the city of Los Angeles, and also to show my kids how important history is. Alley being, the pueblo, basically what my dad used to call it, La Placita, was historical and unique in its own way. Me being a history buff, it'd probably take me back a long time. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
I think it's great. Did you go to school in California?
I did. I'm actually not too far from here, Wilson High School in LA.
Okay, Old Wilson or New Wilson?
Uh, New Wilson.
New Wilson, okay, that tells you if I remember Old Wilson.
I went to the Old Wilson as a junior high school.
It's a junior high, but that was Wilson before Big Wilson.
Right.
And then Sal Castro was really responsible for it, for history reasons. The Lincoln High teacher led the walkouts to get New Wilson built up on the hill there. But the history in your background in energy, water, and power is the history of the city, so blending that all in, there's an old exhibit in the El Pueblo that should be updated, so I just think it's exciting, and when you talk about your children, and you mean now all the children of the city are going to benefit by your experience and trying to push that at the historic monument, and if we could get a bike rental facility there, I'd be real happy.
Mr. Matas, we had an opportunity to sit down and chat and talk about Common Friends and all kinds of things, but this commission, on a serious note, has had its challenges over the years. You know, it's a quiet little facility. People go and they enjoy themselves, but behind the scenes, there's all kinds of stuff going on, and it takes a lot of patience to, the patience of Solomon sometimes, I think, to work with the El Pueblo community. Notwithstanding that, it is, it is still the center of Los Angeles. It is the place, it is our birthplace, and we should respect it as such and create the best opportunities that we can out of it. I'm hoping to see getting back to our roots in terms of the kinds of cultural events that go on there. I think sometimes we focus on the dollar, and it takes away from the cultural aspects of the program, so that would be my preference, and I know we had that conversation, and I think, I think you will be able to help move us in that direction. But with that, it's my pleasure to join with Councilman Labange and support your nomination and send it on to council with a recommendation for support.
Super. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Take care. I believe that completes our agenda. Are there any other public comment cards?
No public comment.
No, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your patience.